So sharing it too. I'll go over that, what this looks like in mind.
Well, because it's weird because it's based on the, um, like with the chess deck because now all part of SEDP.
Do you want to just? Well, I put it out there. Do you want to flip them?
Or we put one in, one there.
All right, we will call the regular Board of Education meeting for August 15th at 6:02 PM. I see forum, but we will hold it.
Mr. Cray, Mr. Bivens.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mrs. Wiley.
All right, with that, we'll move to number two, which is closed session. So I'll make a motion to move into closed session at 6:03 PM. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Troy. Can we have you roll over?
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mr. Cray. Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bivens.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley. Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Hi, adding you to the call.
All right, thank you.
All right, we will resume in public session after this pending closed session at 7:09 PM. Can I have a little public session?
This is Wiley, Mr. Craig.
Here, here.
Mr. Curry.
Here.
Mr. Bivens.
Here.
Mr. Quagmire.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
All right, with that, stand up and move on, there's no action as of yet on closed session. So four pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments?
No.
Can you keep the net? All right, so we will move to number six here, revision and adoption of the agenda. Any changes? All right, so I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as outlined in front of us. Can I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Quagmire, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, so we will keep the agenda ahead of time. Moving on to number seven, Ms. Lamar, the superintendent of support.
So we have a number of donations that we would like to recognize today. The Huntley Gridiron Club, 3,500 from Bronxburg Training Camp for football. And a number of companies also donating to Huntley High School football. Per Insurance Group, Triple K, NB, Huntley Gridiron Club, Incredible Builders, Carless Solutions Group, LLC, and Bricks and Ivy, LLC. So again, thank you to all of those organizations, businesses to continue to support various types of student programs that we have up at the high school. And then, I think we have a little video. Before we do that, just wanted to, basically this week was the start yesterday, first through 12th grade, and our light program started today, our kinders, it was a rainy morning, but they came in full of excitement anyway with that, and tomorrow we'll welcome our ECC students. And so, just wanted to have a quick little video that Kimmy Moore from the Communications Department put together, so we're going to continue to add to that with some of our ECC photos tomorrow. And this is kind of more focused on our elementary, but just to see some of the joy and excitement of our students and staff as they were coming back to school yesterday and today. So a little taste of what we've all been experiencing the last two days out supporting all of our buildings and making sure that they have everything that they need. And I just wanted to give just a couple little stats as of today. So we have 10 schools, 8,404 students as of today, 1,430 staff members, 70 of those as of today were new staff members to the district, 18 retirements that we know of for this year. Our class of 2025, a 768 seniors. And as we welcomed our class of 2037 today, it was a class of 501. So we know those numbers will change, we'll have six day enrollment. We know that there are a lot of things that are continuing to grow and develop in terms of housing developments in, mainly in Huntley, but we have some in the other areas that we do bring students in. And so one of the things that I put just at your table here, this is very surface level. But we know that as Huntley has looked at some of the developments that they have, we know that there's been comments or questions of where are these fellows going to go? And so we took a look at what does our enrollment look like now? And actually went back to 2015 to look at that 10-year, what are our trends at each one of our buildings? What was the peak? And that peak with each building looked a little different in different years. And then worked with what is our educational design capacity? And that one's a little bit tricky because we know that we're not adding, there's space occupancy in a gymnasium and in our room. Well, those aren't classrooms, that would be our homerooms, if you will. And so, in looking at kind of that capacity, for the most part, they looked at classroom spaces that would be for the gen ed core or homeroom type classrooms, so classes of 25. And we know that some can go larger and some smaller. And so that's, it's kind of a little bit deceiving there to say, hey, all of our classes are going to be at this size. And we also know that some of our classrooms have been converted to maybe self-contained classrooms, and those would have much smaller classes in there. Or it might be housing, you know, three or four staff members that might be pulling out for interventions or an office area. But as we had room for those things, that's changed over time. But if we look at some of our peak years when the enrollment was much higher, they may have been in offices, or that pullout might have looked different. But we know that a lot of what we're doing today is more push-in. And so, a little bit later, we're going to be looking at a strategic plan. And I'll just give a hint that we're going to be getting, ready to get some input from you, but we've also worked with our team on what some of those KPIs might look like for next year and into the future. One of the things that we really feel we should take this and really go a little bit deeper. We can look at birth rates, we can look at what land do we still have, working with our village and our, you know, their townships of how are those zones? Could those be homes? Are they going to be homes that have age restrictions? Or are they going to be more single-family homes? All of those kinds of things. We can look at what does our contract say? What are some of our programs that we have in our buildings and how it goes to expand? And really take this information to do some future planning of, will we or will we not need to have additions or boundary changes or things like that? Based on this, we could make some decisions, but there's a lot of other factors. And so this was kind of just to get surface, real high levels of say, okay, yeah, we have, we look at our, on here it says 8,351 because students who might be in and out of district placement. I put those in my number for 8,404, but they are not in one of our buildings here. So if you look at some of this, it may show that some buildings are at around that 3% capacity. And we know that if we needed to make some decisions, we could go ahead and do so. But this was to kind of, as we're eyeballing things, or as we know that new developments are coming in, what should we be keeping on the horizon? So while we're okay today and tomorrow, we want to make sure we are okay in the future. And so that will probably be a deeper discussion in a KPI. And there's a lot of it that we can do in-house, and do we have to tap into other organizations or whatnot to be able to get some of that information? And we know some of our surrounding school districts have done those kinds of things as they've looked at either expanding or collapsing buildings based on enrollment. So we will make sure that we do, I will put this in the agenda and link that up there. But again, know that there's a lot of other variables that go in there. But right now, we can take on the enrollment of new students that are moving in because of you. Okay, our 10-year average, it was 9,088. And in some of ours, our highest, it actually went up to 9,559. That was in 2007. So we are quite a bit smaller than that now. And as you heard, our class of 2037 is 501 today, and our graduating class right now is 768. So if we continue to see that trend, there is a large number of students that will drop off, but we've got to continue to watch what is developing and what are those outcomes. So we'll sneak peek to why one of our KPIs might be, but this can help get some talking to points if people are worried about some of our buildings and maybe where that growth might occur. Any questions?
I'll just make a couple comments. So the first thing is, when I started working at this at one point, there was a, when you put together the, the there was a, when you put together the team, and some of the board members probably did this for the high school in building it, it was targeting three thousand. And you built it at thirty-three hundred and hit that right on the head there. That's pretty good planning. Lucky there. No, it was really good planning because it was like thirty-one hundred on that. But it is, obviously, we have a lot of nice buildings. I don't know what our oldest building is, but I don't.
High school.
Is it? So is that fifteen, twenty years? Twenty-five, it was.
Oh, exactly.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight years. So and it looks like it's in pretty good shape. I mean, again, we want to keep maintaining the building and keep refreshing them, but they can build more houses, I believe that will.
Yeah, remember, there are, good chunks of it are much younger. The oldest parts are that old, but there's been several additions that have occurred at it, so.
Even our newer buildings are getting twenty years old though.
Yeah. But they are in good shape. And our team has done a really good job of doing that.
So to sum that, I know all of our staff have worked really, really hard to get ready for yesterday, today, and tomorrow. And we can't do that without them, and it's going to be a fantastic.
Thank you, Ms. Lombard. So move on to number eight, Assistant Superintendent Learning and Interventions, Dr. Lombard.
Good evening. I have a couple of updates first to talk about new teacher and staff institute days that we just completed on Thursday and Friday of last week. Welcome to all of our new staff, which, Ms. Lombard, I believe you said it was seventy new staff? So.
As of that date.
As of that date. There you go, you got it. And what we did on those days was the time to really help them familiarize themselves with Huntley, the curriculum, their resources, and give them an opportunity to meet with their mentors. Each of our certified staff members are assigned a mentor who is a veteran teacher who can help support them throughout their first couple of years as they join our district. And then they have time to meet with their instructional coaches so they can help support their practices. And then we offer, we also just one given time to get in their classrooms and get to know what Huntley is, how to use a copy or anything like that. So it's important work that we do, but those are on Thursday and Friday. And then on Monday and Tuesday this week, all staff are welcome by Ms. Lombard with, you know, an opening address. And then we really continue to focus on how do we reconnect and refocus at our building levels? We set the focus on behavior management practices, that next round of it. We had a presenter come in that, from State Institute of Schools to continue that champ, that rollout. And she was very well received from all of our different grade level bands of staff, but she was really able to help us focus on how do we interact positively with students and still hold accountability of expectations? And that was what we really wanted her to do. And so she was able to meet with our staff for that. And then teachers also have time to, we focus on supporting student attendance, what that will look like. And then some time for individual staff preparation and time to meet with PLCs. And so those days are very much appreciated and well-used, and we try to really balance it with that professional learning and also giving staff time as well in order to be ready for the new year. So we will send out a survey tomorrow or Monday, just like getting feedback from staff. We've had, again, we've had initial very, very positive from based on our feedback, but we want to get the enrollment first to make sure that it was meeting the intended goals. And then we're also rolling into beginning of the year testing. So universal screeners are our first shot to be able to catch any type of learning loss that might happen over summer. They give us that quick check on students on reading and math to help see where they are and what we might need to dive in deeper to. So we give a star assessment, we talked about that before, and also aims web. And so that's all the different grade level bands to assess reading and math. And then we also give a couple of diagnostic assessments for those students who stand out as maybe needing some more support and really pinpoint exactly what area that might need to be. And so you'll see in the next couple of weeks that that's what our staff are doing and trying to really help figure out where our students are so we can help support them and bring their learning along this school year. We are also continuing with our special polls surveys pilot. And so that first round of that, of that survey will begin September ninth through the twentieth. Families will receive a letter next week to let them be asked to choose to understand about it and also the option to opt-out, just like we've done in the past. It's important to note that we do have to have an opt-out form each year, so families will need to complete that if they did last year again. And then we will be sending out the results of the screeners to families just like we did last time by October seventh. That week is our goal, and families will have the opportunity to get input as well. And so this time, you know, again, it's the teachers doing it for kinder through fifth grade, and then our sixth through twelfth grade students will be taking the student survey. And so that's what's going on over in the learning innovation area.
Any questions? Okay.
Good thing. All right, that moves to number nine, the chief financial officer, Dr. Lombard.
Thank you. Just, just one update to supervise the board of education. You know, as we get closer to finalizing the FY25 budget, two weeks ago, we presented the display draft. And within that time, I had let the board know that if there were material adjustments that came down the pipeline, which we were expecting, I would let the board know about that, and I would also update the display draft. So I did want to provide an update to the board on two of those adjustments because two of those adjustments are very material in nature. The first one being the evidence-based funding. And we did communicate this to the board, but we did want to put this out in open session. With the evidence-based funding model, we had budgeted an annual increase from the state of Illinois of approximately $2.8 million. That was the tier-one increase that we received last year. And if you recall, in FY23 and previous years, we were receiving anywhere from $695,000, and then that jumped up to $1.23 million when we, when we moved from tier-two into tier-one. And then last year, that kind of ballooned up to $2.8 million. And it ballooned up to $2.8 million because as part of the calculation, with CPPRT increasing across the state, what that ended up doing within the calculation was a lot of tier-one districts were no longer tier-one, they fell to tier-two. And as a result of that, in prior fiscal year, there was more funding for the tier-one school districts. There was less tier-one school districts. Well, during the year, it was communicated to us because we all know that CPPRT was still on the rise for the last several years and slightly falling off, but it was still very high. We were communicated with from ISB as well as our own association that we should expect a very similar payout, a tier-one payout. So with that, we budgeted a $2.8 million increase to the evidence-based funding model. But when the actual calculation came out, well, we fell back to the level of FY23 at $1.23 million, almost the exact same amount that we received in FY23. So with that, that is approximately a $1.5, $1.55 million reduction in state funding that has been reflected as part of the display draft. A few facts and figures because we looked into it and we weren't expecting it. In fact, in talking with many other CFOs, including the Rockford CFO that last year went from tier-one to tier-two, well, they returned to tier-one, and he was, they were not expecting to return to tier-one, right? Because of all that communication. So there were twenty-nine additional tier-one districts that kind of came back on the tier-one roll this year. And although that only represents an eight-point-five percent increase in districts, well, there was a fifteen, sixteen percent increase in the number of students. So those twenty-nine additional districts represented approximately ninety thousand additional students in that tier-one bucket, which is primarily the reason why we fell back to FY23 levels of $1.23 million. So we continue to look at the calculation and understand the CPPRT impact. You know, we looked at, at what point is the attachment level of tier-one? And that's pretty consistent year over year, it's at about seventy-eight percent, seventy-seven to seventy-eight percent. So there was really no difference there. Approximately two hundred and forty-five districts, excuse me, of all of the districts that were in tier-one on each given year, approximately $245 million were allocated to tier-one, so that was also consistent. You know, just looking for more answers than other than that, while there were twenty-nine additional districts that fell in tier-one, and that kind of diluted the pool of tier-one money, so.
Isn't that the most simplistic thing? Just look at it as a pool of money. It was a smaller pool, we, decent chunk of it the year before. More people in the pool, there's less to allocate towards us this year.
Correct. Yeah, that's, that's really the answer, but, but I wanted to double-check the calculation. So I was looking at everything. So I thought I'd show those little facts. So that is that adjustment. The other adjustment is interest earnings. We ended the FY24, as we have all seen, month after month. We exceeded budget significantly in FY24, did pretty well with interest earnings of approximately $2.4 million. And with our current investment pool and how we're currently budgeting, we estimate that number to be approximately $2.1 million in FY25. The current budget level was set at $1.5 million. So we recognize, or we're increasing that budget line item approximately $600,000 to $2.1 million for FY25. But at the end of the day, from where we were, the previous display draft, was showing a surplus of $2.2 million. With the reduction of EBF and the increase of interest earnings of $600,000, we are back up to approximately $1.1 million in operating surplus. Adjustments continue to flow. In fact, today, yesterday, and today, I continue to tweak our title grants and all of the grants from the state that we now get final numbers for. We booked private facility, adjusted all of those title grants today. And we still remain approximately, we're kind of neutral on all of those adjustments. We still remain at approximately $1.1 million in operating surplus. Other adjustments that will be coming down the line. We did finalize the transportation reimbursement today. That is looking to be flat with prior year as well, but we'll have to book that adjustment. And then we'll continue to look at health insurance over the next several weeks to see if we need to tweak that as well. But those are the material adjustments that we still need to make. And reclassifications along the way as we work with building departments, make sure that we're allocating their budget appropriately as they see or they need to have within their, within their building. So other than that, just wanted to give the board that update, and we'll continue to keep you updated along the way. On September fifth, we will have the final budget hearing. And so that is only three weeks away, so stay tuned for that as well. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for us all there?
Thank you all.
All right, so we move to number ten, Associate Superintendent of Human Resources, Dr. Dyer.
Good evening. Just have a few updates from the Human Resources Department. We moved up on the agenda, we took home my fun data. If Lombard did too, that's okay. We'll come back in September with the final pinpointed numbers of the staff and everything. But we're still putting together the final pieces, recruiting subs and some late fills that we need to work through. Mark mentioned insurance, meeting with alliances to get ready to go into our 2025 renewal. Also continuing orientation, and we have our new certified staff members set up with their mentors. And then also preparing the new salary schedules on the HKA contract for the September tenth payroll, so that will go into effect then. And then I didn't have this on here, but we had first two days, transportation. We've had pretty good days, if we can compare them to the last few years. We're still looking for bus drivers, if anyone likes to drive a bus, full-time, part-time, we'll take you. And so hats off to the garage down there, our mechanics, the folks that are behind the scenes, watching the GPS, giving arrival times, radioing to different bus drivers, sending float buses. A lot of, a lot of things go into that that people just don't see, and we appreciate the patience from the public. You know, we may be a few minutes late sometimes, a few minutes early, but the drivers and the staff down there are working very hard, number one, to get their kids safely picked up and dropped off and then to their spot in the timing. So much appreciated as we continue to make adjustments and tweaks as we go throughout the school year here.
And with some of our double backs because of some of our open vacancies with that transportation reached out to those routes that they were aware of that that would be a double back and not on a day-to-day basis wondering, would they be late or would they not? So a lot of that communication was proactive on that.
And we'll see those times get better. Our drivers are taking attendance on these buses, especially with elementary kids, to make sure that they're on the right bus and they're getting into a routine. And as we're picking up kindergarteners for the first time today, you know, we want to make sure everyone's on the right bus, especially, sort of, I'm a pickup and delivery. So, but we want to make sure everyone's on the right bus and getting in the right routine. So that slows us down a little bit as we get into the week of that process.
Good from HR for right now. Any questions? All right. Next time, we'll move you up on the agenda so you can steal some of their thunder.
I do.
The number eleven, Assistant Superintendent of Special Services.
Philander. My, no, mine is very short update, just wanting to inform you. We'll be meeting with our Special Education Advisory Committee quarter of the year this year. We'll have a virtual option and moved our meetings to a little bit later in the evening so more families could join. We've double, triple-checked all of our calendar dates so that it's not overlapping any of our existing parent meetings, bands, concerts, everything that we could possibly consider that's on my calendar right now. Really diligent with those efforts. And also really just trying to connect with existing meetings and opportunities for families to participate fully. So looking forward to those, our meeting, our first meeting will be September eighteenth, and we'll have December fourth, February nineteenth, and April second. If something else in the district comes up on one of those days, we'll certainly adjust. But hoping if we can come together on those dates to collaborate, we'll be spending a lot of time focusing on meaningful inclusion and opportunities to extend events that are already happening in the district. So my health date. Any questions?
Thanks. So we move to number twelve, Director of Communications and Public Education.
Yes, hi, good evening. So gave you guys a little bit of an update on some of our new communication tools and platforms. A big deal this summer was making sure that we have a reliable mass notification system ready to go for the start of the school year. So we've got that in place now, and it's just, it was of critical importance to get out not only our routine communication, but our, all of our bus communications and all of that good stuff. So we're in a pretty good place, and everybody's been trained, and they're familiar with the platform. And I think, I think there were some good things about it that actually have some capabilities that we didn't have at the other one. An automated attendance feature, for example. Today, we spent some time creating some messaging around that in multiple languages, and we hope that that will be of use and be helpful for our families and especially for our push towards the attendance this year. So all is well with that. And then now full attention on this website. And we'll have maybe just a little bit more time to focus in on that. So excited about that too. And then, yeah, it's just been a great week. It's just been so much fun to see the kids and the families and the staff happy to be back. It's been a really fun, fun week so far. And we've got a parent newsletter coming out on Sunday, so we'll try to recap some important highlights to kick off the year for our families. And a couple of events coming up, PTAC meeting coming up, which maybe you're going to talk about, I don't want to steal yours on this. Or not. So PTAC meeting, our Parent Future Advisory Council meeting will happen next week. That's the first one of four meetings this year, so that'll happen next Tuesday here at the district office. Huntley High School, so their back-to-school night coming up at the end of August on the twenty-seventh. And then Martin, over at Regro, has a back-to-school dash coming up next Friday. Yeah, that's going on. Anything else, any questions or comments?
I love the high school communication with Minga, having the kids check in. I get an email every time, oh, it's over there two days, but that's new, and I like it, so.
Good.
Wanted to throw it out there.
Good. Yes, appreciate the feedback. Can share it back to the audience.
I didn't know when that came through, I went, huh, this is news, it'll be every day. And then sure, well, it's been two days, like.
Good.
I like it. It was good.
Super. I think it's only the second or third year they've had that.
It's been here maybe, so?
Yeah.
But I mean, they didn't alert it when they checked in.
Oh, I see.
Like your student has now entered the building, like at seven twenty-five or whatever.
Okay.
So that I like.
Super. Great, we'll pass that along.
Still glad they didn't have that when I was in high school. Just saying, no.
Different one. Thank you.
Any questions about the way to report? Anything questions around that? So we'll, thank you. Who was the thirteen, the president's report? Just a, I guess from my perspective, just reflecting on as we start the year, it's really, the videos nice to see. It's really cool to see all the kids happy faces. I saw the Facebook ones, they kind of popped out, and it was really well done. I saw the Facebook ones, they kind of popped out and it was really well done. We do, as you mentioned, the P-TAC, the Parent Teacher Advisory Committee is starting next week. An agenda went out to the last year's attendance and we're going to build from that. And I think of the next one, we're going to invite other people, but we're going to be focusing on behavior and just different areas on that. So, I'm looking forward to that as well. And up here, just last year, we had a big push on the phone. I assume we're pushing that again. What else?
I was over dropping off a little retirement tree at Marlowe as I walked through the cafeteria area as administration was talking with the students. And the item that was for discussion was the cell phone. So, even at the middle school, it is off and away during school hours. School hours are 7:25 to 25:00, lunch and all of the passing periods and all. The received, I will say, we, as in the schools, received a number of parents that were very appreciative of that at the open houses. They had received a few students emails to administration that they're not so happy with that. But in the end, this will increase the engagement in the classroom and all of those things. And they know that they have the support from over here as well as we, if we need to address those. And it really does have a lot to do with safety and engagement in the classrooms and in the obstructive times. And then with families who might be a little bit more worried about, if I need to get a hold of my child, please call me in office, right? We will always be able to get in touch if there is an emergency that way rather than people reaching out by via the cell phone to their children. So, we'll continue that, but yes, that is strong. And Nico, you're in the background saying that was stressed at the high school as well?
Even at junior level, yeah.
Perfect.
Especially at junior level. So, yeah, just finishing up, I just, in reflecting on it, we did a lot of work, you guys did a lot of work last year on the behaviors, behavior matrices and the attendance. You're seeing that all come together, so I'm kind of excited to see what happens this year. And we'll learn from it and we'll get better and move forward.
There's a lot of us about the attendance and what's excused or not. So, I believe it's gotten out there. And not that we've heard complaints, but there's just a lot of conversation that we heard at open house, the parents talking to each other about those things, even as kindergarteners were getting dropped off. So, the rep, he had heard that in the, you know, just in the vestibular area. And so, we pushed it out quite well and we'll continue that campaign.
Well, I know Mr. Gibbs at Hyman, I was at that one. He did an excellent job just telling the parents who are all in the gym. He did, I even wrote him an email, I'm like, you did fantastic. That was really, he really touched on so many points on how many students were gone in the last year. And he was asking some of the parents, like, how many do you think? You know, just at Hyman or all over the district. And they had no idea, you just don't think about it, you're just not thinking how many. And so, they were just kind of really blown away. And so, he was just like, this is how important it is in your power, is your presence, just like you said in your speech. And I just thought it was really good. And he really touched on the phones and he, because I have an eighth grader, so I'm like, that was really good. Everything was spot on and I just feel like it's just continuing off through with high school at all the buildings. I'm just really proud of everybody, how it's presented and heard.
Yeah.
Thank you for that, sorry. All right, no other comments? Any new items, any items to discuss? All right, we'll move on with that. We'll move to 14, the consent agenda. Any discussion around any of the consent agenda? All right, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined here in 14.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quaglano, can I have a little call vote, please?
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mr. Quaglano.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley. Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
And Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Pass this quick there and we'll move on to the action items. So, we move here to 15, one, the 2023-24 strategic planning measures.
Sure, I'll go through and highlight each of the areas. Most of these had a presentation here at the board at some point throughout the school year, either updating those or then the completion of a variety of these activities. But on an annual basis, and needs to be around the, this August meeting, because the strategic planning goals are tied to performance. And there is, with some of the contracts, has been whatnot, some ties to kind of an all-in approach that we are all accountable for the continuous work within the district. And so, looking at our KPIs, there were 28, there are a lot. We're going to pare those down a little bit, a lot of it for next year. With that, and the district, there's a depending. So, what we're looking at is that KPI 4.1 has to do with the district meeting or exceeding the state's fiscal health guidelines and returning to the recognition status. We know that we do need to be able to approve what percentage we're at so that for that September test page, we are able to have that in time for payroll to process and each are to work through. And so, of the 28 goals, 24 were met this past year if KPI 4.1 is achieved. Our auditor will be here next week, I believe they're here on Monday or Tuesday and should have to us by the end of the week what that recognition status is. Is that correct, Mr. Altmeier?
Yeah, by the end of the week, we should have a preliminary view into what we think our profile ratings score with the state would be. At this point, we do believe we are going to step up to recognition. In prior years, we fell a little short because while we ended up in a deficit position, we're not anticipating that this year. So, but that should be finalized at the end of next week audit.
So, we didn't want to say, we think we are, we've accomplished that. So, that was the one goal that's kind of in limbo. So, if we do meet KPI 4.1, 24 of the 28 goals would have been achieved given us an 86%. If that goal, KPI indicator is not achieved, we would be at 23 of our 28 would be an 82%. So, we will have and we will give that update at the committee as a whole so that we can then process everything in time for payroll. That one aside, the other four, three of those were part of our learning and innovation and our achievement around math. And we know that that is a goal that we need to continue. You will see that moving forward, but we saw movement and that was extremely important. So, while we did not meet the indicator, there was a lot of work done. There was movement that was moving in that direction. Actually, one of those, Dr. McCriddell and I were talking, well, if you round up, it would be at the three. And we're like, yeah, we're not going to go for rounding up. We want to like achieve it at its true meaning. So, we did put that as a not meet, but knowing that we're continuing and you will see more of what those action steps moving forward with math. Next month, we'll bring forward the next phases of some of our indicators. The other wasn't, wasn't one that we did not meet, but we kind of decided to hold off on a little bit. It was, we had done the survey at both of our middle schools with bullying and we partnered with Prevent Schools Violence Bill and White. There was some things with working with them on timeline to be able to push our survey out. With that, some personal things that were going on there and we decided when it was time for that, to be able to push that out. Much of the year had gone on and we wanted to make sure that the questions of the surveys, we were able to get out to parents in time so that they were aware of the types of questions that were being asked. We heard that loud and clear with the satchel pulse and some of the other pieces of that. We also want to share with the high school's principal advisory to be able to take a look to say, hey, we're missing a question maybe around this based on the things that they are hearing. So, the goal is, the intent is that we will take those so that we do get that parent input and comfortability of the questions that are being asked and the student component so that we get that. And I think it would be a beautiful tie-in to have these discussed, both at the school's level of the P-TAC, if you will, their advisory, as well as some of the work around the P-TAC. Definitely ties in with some of our policies with bullying on that. So, we will kick that off. Typically, you don't want to do that those first couple of weeks. Part of that is we're doing a lot of academic assessments. But the second piece of that is we want students, especially our ninth graders getting in there, it's the first year in the building, to really get the culture, feel the culture of the building, be able to assess what is going on, how is this maybe different than it was when they were at the middle school? And to get some of those. And then to share with especially students and staff at the high school and then the data that we learned from the middle schools of what do we do here from here? Where do we see areas that we are actually doing really well? We've added and there's been growth and more students utilizing our hotlines and things like that. So, we know that we have made some gains and improvement there. But are there areas where students still might feel there is some bullying or harassment or discrimination going on? They see parts of the building that we don't always know about. And hey, it's really okay when it's here, but in these type of settings, we really need to focus on that. And to get them involved in that work is going to be critical. And so, we are going to make sure that that was meaningful and start that off here as a small to include here students on that. So, that'll be a continued goal. Whether it's an indicator that we put forward or not, it is a goal that we are going to do. There's a lot of work that we do at the district level and at the school level that don't make the 28 indicators here. But that is the work that we do on a daily basis. And we know that it's going to be critical next year that every single student feels that they have that trusted adult to go to for situations, whether it's academic or it is something that's concerning, you know, with a behavioral type component going on there. So, that one, we could have rushed it, could check a box, but we really wanted to make it meaningful. So, we decided in the spring, let's postpone it to next year and make that a meaningful impact. So, others we've touched upon during the course of the school year. But wanted to open it up, one, to the board at first, if there were any questions on the report of the indicators there. And are you okay with us voting on that it's either the 86 or 82 pending KPI 4.1 so that we can start the payroll processing there? But we will give you an update prior to us moving forward on that.
Yeah, that's not a problem. Don't want to hold up payroll.
The second component, just to see if there is any feedback. We've started the work with our cabinet team and then our leadership team here at the district office and including our principals to start talking about what are some of those. Some of these items are continuous improvement. We're going to continue to set goals and KPIs that might not be part of the strategic plan because there's things we should be doing and again, continuously improving in various areas. But if we look at that from a strategic planning measure, are there some items that the board would really like us to, before we bring it forward in September, make sure, we may have some of those already set there, but that you really feel strongly from a board stance that we want to make sure are embedded in there? And then the second piece is, Dr. McCriddell and I, I talked about it a little bit last month, are working with EAD and really looking at taking this to more than just that continuous improvement to more of the strategic planning. We talked a little bit about how do we make sure five years from now, four years from now, our buildings are able to meet the growth that's happening in our boundaries and all of those components? And so, like that, to me, that's that future planning that takes a little bit more than just our day-to-day work that we're going to do. And so, we had a meeting with EAD and Mrs. Barba, I want to include you in that. Part of our partnership with them is that they are willing to work with us to develop that timeline. Part of that, the cost we already do. So, it's not something on top of that where we can lead through the strategic planning process, but looking at it more globally, a lot of colleges and universities use that kind of approach that they've shifted to a little bit. So, having a face-to-face meeting with one of their employees and to develop what that timeline would look like. And then we would bring that to share with all of you what our goal is, starting with that portrait of a graduate and really wanting to make sure that we're including our students to help us facilitate some of our sessions, to keep all of our stakeholders remembering our why it's the kids and having them participate with these sessions as we move forward. So, stay tuned for that, but if there are any things you really want to make sure that we have top on our minds and make sure when we present that in September, we certainly love to hear your voice.
It's just a couple, 28 is too many. You probably do need to turn that down. I think we got that feedback from even when we went through some of the other stuff. There's too many things going on. The personal thing for me would be the teaching of the math up there. Maybe the US has forgotten how to teach math. I was looking at the national, international scores and we have just dropped, we just keep dropping a trick of math. And then I guess for me, I would like to see some more of the culture side of things. So, what we talked about with the high school and with the staff and maybe even metrics around that, around turnover or anything like that. I would talk about that, it would be a good quantifiable metric of are we retaining that?
And you can marinate on it, let me know later, that's good to, so perfect.
With that, I'll make a, I'm looking, I'll make a motion to approve the 2023-24 strategic planning measures as outlined at either 82% or 86%, depending on 4.1. Can I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to go to Mr. Troy. Or Mr. Thompson.
Whatever.
One of the guys down there. All right, can I roll call vote?
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Quaglano.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Right, that has to stick there. We'll do 15, two, HR personnel reports, anything to add to that other than that? All right, any questions or comments? All right, with that, I'll make a motion to approve 15.2, the HR personnel report. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Murray, can I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Mrs. Murray. Yes.
Mr. Quaglano.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
All right, with that, 15.2 passes six zero. We'll move on to 15.3, intergovernmental agreement with Nile Township District for Special Education 807 to support the needs of one of our students.
And you know, we provide a continuum of service for our students here in the district for special education. And we are absolutely impressed with all of the work we do. And we just recognize that along that continuum, we do also offer student placement outside of district at times when the needs of our students are more extended than what we can support in district. There is an IEP team decision that we make. And some of our resources in off-campus placement or out-of-district placement are public therapeutic day schools and private therapeutic day schools. And we do have a partnership and have had an intergovernmental agreement with Nile Township. And we are looking for the board approval to continue with this partnership that we can provide an out-of-district placement for one of our students in our district.
Questions?
Thank you so much.
So, with that, I will, yeah, I would like to move forward with 15.3, intergovernmental agreement with Nile Township District for Special Education 807 to support the needs of one of our students. I have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Murray, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mr. Quaglano.
All right, with that, 15.3 passes six zero. Move to 15.4, supplemental purchase orders and accounts payable. Mr. Altmeier, any comment? Nothing else to add? All right, any questions? All right, with that, move forward to approve 15.4, supplemental purchase orders and accounts payable. Have a second, thank you, Mr. Quaglano, can I roll call vote?
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Quaglano.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
With that, 15.4 passes six zero. We move to 15.5, Illinois EPA grants to bring out the EW electric buses.
Yeah, this is the grant agreement between the state of Illinois, the Environmental Protection Agency, and the school district, awarding the district the funding for four electric buses and the related charging stations, not to exceed $1.192 million, asking for the board's approval of this grant agreement, and with that approval, I will go ahead and sign it, move that forward.
I do have no questions. So, the four buses, are they in the budget that you have right now as?
Correct, yes, so the four buses, the four electric buses, as well as the two potential Renew America grants, at 95% paid for, are also in the budget, so what's in the budget currently is enough funding for six electric buses.
Is there any other buses at all in the budget?
No, no, and based on the work with the transportation department, the need for buses next year, for replacement, based on what we have in the fleet, and what we need to probably, or what we should be pulling out of the fleet, represents six buses.
Yeah, I struggle with this, because we're spending $400,000 for a bus, really frustrating, I realize we're getting the money from somebody, my grant, because they, because on their mission testing, but I do struggle with it. The charging, I thought, I heard you say before, that we had built out the charging for 12 buses.
We built out the infrastructure for 12, but we don't have the 12 charging stations on site, so the additional money that we requested here, we requested enough money for a charger, for a level three charger, actually an EV charger, B to G charger, excuse me, upwards of $45,000 per charger, if we opt not to go with a B to G charger, if we opt to go with something less, the charging station would be much less, it could be, I think for a level two charger, it's, I believe, $11,000 approximately, 12, 11 for two, right? But, looking at how we're utilizing our buses, it'll help us make that decision a little sooner, again, the money that is being provided through this grant would cover 75% of whatever that charging cost is, which is why I selected the highest level charger available, because that would maximize our funding.
That new terminology, the B to G, is that a level three, what does that mean?
B to G is a level three charger, that has the software and capability to essentially give power back to the grid, we could take, we could charge our buses in the middle of the night, when the cost of electricity is one to none, and release that energy, that power back to the grid, and actually sell it back to the grid, so a B to G charger would actually create revenue opportunities for the district.
Do we already have the power wall of the battery?
Well, that's, the battery's on board of the bus.
Yeah, all the infrastructure's already.
So the infrastructure is already in place, and what this B to G charger will do, when hooked up to the bus, it can do two things, it, when we set these up, it may have the ability, correct, if I'm wrong, Mr. Rankosik, if we set this up appropriately, we can use that power directly from the buses to power this building, if we needed to, in certain circumstances, we would also have the ability to sell the power back to the grid, so in the middle of the summer, when a lot of those electric buses are not being used on a daily basis, we could be charging those buses off of our solar, and then selling that energy back to the grid, we're already doing that via the solar, but the play would be, we would charge these buses at night, when the cost of commed, power is next to nothing, and we would sell it back to the grid in the middle of the day when they need it, when the rates are much higher, that's B to G.
Arbitration.
Vehicle to grid, it's arbitration.
Arbitration.
So we're providing, we're providing power back to the grid when they absolutely need it.
Or they're back at nine.
Yeah.
Sure, I can get stuff up to the plate if you need to, but I think that's right. 99%.
Yeah.
I'll take 99%.
For that 99, we'll just round up to 100.
I thought we were rounding down. I thought we were.
Not this time.
I appreciate for that, I mean, again, the, a level two charger isn't that expensive, so I was trying to.
Correct, correct.
Really just going on.
Yeah, and these dollars are on the budget, please recognize that under, under this proposal, we are allowed to also apply for the Inflationary Reduction Act, so although one of these buses will cost us $85,000 under this grant, right, 354,000, that's 25% is approximately $85,000, we will be eligible for, in fiscal year '25, which is calendar year '24, if we receive the buses by then, apply for a $40,000 investment tax credit under the IRA for each and every bus that we put in the play this year.
4,500 or 45,000?
$40,000, so the cost of the bus to the district would, instead of 85,000, would be 45,000.
Yeah, we sell the tax credit, then?
Pardon?
We sell the tax credit, is that, are we?
No, we apply under.
Or we get the funds.
No, the, it's not an investment tax credit, it's under the, I said investment tax credit, it's not investment tax credit, it's just a credit under the Inflationary Reduction Act, that we would be eligible for by putting an electric bus into play, there's a $40,000 credit that we would be able to receive from the district. We're currently applying, right, I informed the board, I'm working with a public accounting firm, to fill out all the tax forms, to receive the investment tax credit on the solar array, to receive the $7,500 for the five hybrid minivans that we purchased well, well over a year ago in '23, and to also receive that $40,000 credit for the four electric buses that we have on site, so we're looking at over $450,000 of tax credits, which will be cash, coming back to the district via the IRS, once we get these forms completed, and obviously they process them on there. So that is also kind of part of the budgeted dollars that we are seeing in FY '25.
Yeah, I guess, a lot of, yes, but I hate the fact that all we're doing is, we're just increasing the cost of the bus later on, because of all this public money.
I understand.
It's frustrating to me, because we're spending $400,000 for a bus, five years from now, everybody's going to be spending, it doesn't matter, $400,000 for a bus, it should be $100,000.
I understand.
Well, it's probably.
I'm just trying to say, oh, you know what I'm trying to do, yeah.
Well, it probably won't be, you know, we wouldn't be spending $400,000 for a bus in the future.
Other people are doing that right now.
We, 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 we would not be.
Yeah, there are a few districts, but very, very few have the resources to do that.
The problem is, is the propane buses, as you outlined, going up to 150, 170,000.
Now, that's, you know, your, that part is, you're driving, you're driving up.
You've got this generic pharmacy pricing that's going on, where you've got the neighborhood, which is the electric vehicle, and then they just creep up the other one, that's what happens, but.
So, Mark, refresh my, when we first, the first draft of our budget, I don't know if this type of bus purchases were in there, didn't we have a higher budget for transportation, for bus purchases, and this brought it down?
In the last draft of the budget, this, this late draft of the budget, we reduced that line item from 1.1 million to 400,000, and we did that because, it was 1.1, because six buses at $170,000, well, approximates 1.1 million, but with the opportunity with the DW grant, this grant that you have in front of you, and the opportunity with the Renew America grant, we were able to reduce that budget line item by $100,000, for the same amount of buses.
Right, okay, just for the record, that's fine, and I, yeah, I mean, it did, it's, it makes me start to think into the future, because I don't know what the recapture is on this, but, okay, five years from now, buses, electric, they were 200, 250, we can trade them in and be buying 130, 40,000 bucks?
Nope.
I don't know.
Yeah, we'll see what happens, I don't have a first of all.
We'll have flying cars by then.
They're coming.
Any additional questions?
No.
Flying cars, all right, so I'll make the motion to, to approve 15.5 Illinois EPA grant agreement, EW electric buses, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Troy, can I roll call both?
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bivin?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
All right, that has a six zero, and we will move on, do public comment now, I don't see anything, then we'll move to, I'll make a motion to move back into closed session at 8:11 PM.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I will hold, one more.
Right.[1232.12]
One more. Yeah.
All right. We will exit closed, all right, so we will resume in public session at 9:08 PM on Thursday, August 15, 24. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Vivin?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mr. Cready. Mrs. Wiley. Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
All right, we do have some action out of closed session, so I'll start that off. If there's any discussion, any discussion upstairs? Okay, so I will make a motion. I move to recommend students 2024-0801 be expelled, held in the van, conditional of the acceptance and upon successful completion at the regional state schools for the 2024, '25 and 2025, '26 school years. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quagliano. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Vivin.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley. Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Cready.
All right, that motion passes 5-0. Any other items? At the fact, we will move to, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:09 PM.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quagliano. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, meeting is done.
You have a next one?
I want to go.
Okay.